30, I'd like to call this February 8th meeting of the Willetts City Council to order. And Jane, would you be willing to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong, Rodriguez, present.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Mayor Connie.
Yes.
I'd like to open the dais for public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings, and comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. Dolores has a little timer, just in case anyone worried about that three minutes. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited, and the city council can take no action on these non-agendized items. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, Jane's gonna go up first, so if you could come to the podium and give us your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Jane McCabe, and I live here in Willets and have for about 21 years. Live in town now, and I love this area. I'm really proud to be a Willets person, and we have beautiful mountains, and we're doing, I think, a beautiful job in our town. I want to commend the city for the way they keep up our parks and our athletic fields, and we enjoy walking over around the parks almost every day. And I think that's exceptional for a town the size of ours to have the kinds of things that we actually have, including our new, our fantastic hospital and art center and brand-new fire department. And I'm on the WELL Board, well, it's Economic Localization, that's been around for about 18 years now, and we had a meeting this last Sunday. I wanted to say that one of the things, it was about sustainability, agriculture, local agriculture, housing, music in the arts, and health. And we had a really phenomenal turnout. We were stuffed the room, actually, to standing room only. But one speaker really touched me, and that was Helen Palandas. And she actually helps to direct Manzanita Services, which is services for the Middle Hill. It's a self-help organization that runs out of the Methodist Church, and I'm a member of the Methodist Church as well. And we've noticed that there's quite a few people that are without shelter. Sometimes they want to stay on the property there at the church, which we don't allow. But Helen works regularly with people that are unhoused. She's always been, I've known her for 20 years. I knew, I met her within the first couple of weeks that I moved here. She's a very stalwart person and has a background in working at Ford Street with rehab and also over in Covelo. She's not a wimp. She's a tough gal and brilliant and kind. And she stopped me in the hallway at the church the other day and said that she was, she could hardly stand to turn people out at night after having them there during the day, giving services, and they can have a cup of coffee and sometimes they have a little snack. And most of the people are housed that she deals with, but there's a good percentage that aren't. And she just has to turn them out into the rain and the cold. And there's not even a warming shelter in our town. If we have homeless animals, they go to a shelter. But we're treating our people like they don't count just because they have the name that we use as homeless. And I've just started saying, I'm not accusing the city council of anything, nothing that I haven't done myself. I mean, I say, well, it's too big a problem. But I think that we could have a warming shelter. I think we can somehow figure out how to do that, and I don't really expect the city to do it. But I think that's something we could do. And this town, I'm so proud of, and I know we can vision things. We visioned a firehouse when people aren't getting them, when they were tearing down hospitals in other rural areas, we built a new one. We can do exceptional things here, we have. So I just think that's something that I'd like to see us look at as a community and shift our attitudes about those people that are unhoused, because it could be your uncle that was in Vietnam, and it could be any of our family. Some people don't have families.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you. Thank you for speaking with such heart. I think you had your hand up?
Some kind of emotional, she said.
Definitely.
Not a good public speaker, but I'm Lenisha. I also reside here in Willets and have for a very long time. I wanted to address and ask the city council to reconsider its ordinance on food trucks. And it has no Main Street, no Commercial Street, and 28 days out of the year, food trucks and vendors are only allowed to be in Willets, the city. I'm a business owner. I owned a business in Willets and closed it, partially because of that ordinance, bought a building in Leightonville and opened my food truck in Leightonville, which I know is hurting, it could be, my money could be going to the economy here. There's other business, food truck vendors that I know who are trying to make a living, provide for their families, who also live here in Willets and who are being threatened to, you know, get shut down. And I just think it's really sad, and I wanted to bring that back to your attention and see if maybe you would reconsider that. Because I added it up, even if we did like a Friday night food truck night, that's 52 Fridays, so it doesn't fall within your ordinance either. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time. And I have one more thing. Two years ago, because I have a background in social work, and when I came to talk to the city about a day shelter, the person who I had talked to said that Willets doesn't really have a problem with homelessness, but we really do. We have a huge problem, and I would even be willing to volunteer my time if you guys did open a shelter, so.
Can you make sure you leave your name with Dolores? We do have an ad hoc committee around the issue of food trucks. It hasn't met in a while, but it might be time for them to reconsider.
Okay, thank you.
Shannon, would you like to go up?
Dolores. My name's Shannon Turman. I have a clothing store here in Willets, Monkey Ranch, and I just think that there's a, there's a big problem with theft in our town. People are shoplifting a lot more. And I hate to say it, but a lot of our businesses don't even call the police anymore because they're not following through with anything. And I don't know where we can go from there or how we can make them do something about it. I had theft at my store a couple weeks ago. I caught the kid, but it was, I let him go, but the next day, we went to the cops, we did a police report, and they still didn't arrest him. And then his parents were there trying to get him arrested to, because they want help with him. And they called the cops, they tell him where he's at, and he has more stolen stuff. And there's just, it's been over two weeks, and they're not doing anything about it. So I'm not really, I don't understand why, one. And I just think it's going to get worse if we don't crack down on it for the businesses, for the kids. If they see their friends get away with it, they're going to do it, and it'll just be more and more and more, it seems like. And for the community, I mean, we don't want businesses to shut down, but if we keep getting robbed or stole, you know, it's going to happen. So I just, I don't know what you guys can do, but this was the starting point, I guess.
Was this a juvenile?
Yes.
Okay. I know that the laws are a little different, and it kind of actually, it's been really tough, but I would ask you to maybe make an appointment, talk with the chief about your case.
Is it, can he not be arrested because he's a juvenile, even with his parents?
Depends on, depends on the age and what, yeah, it's, in the era I grew up in, you could literally come down to the police department and have your kids thrown in the jail in the back, and that was copacetic back then. That has long since changed, and so.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, it just doesn't seem right that if they're 15 or 16.
Probation still gets involved, it's one of those things. So it's a deal where you don't actually arrest them, but it may be one that the services are there. But that's why I would say that you probably ought to talk to the chief.
Okay.
The chief would like to?
Just to kind of dovetail what Councilman Gonzalez was saying. Lately, excuse my voice here, I'm still recovering from colds and stuff. Basically, the laws for juveniles have changed in the last two or three years. If we have or encounter a juvenile that is accused of or suspected of a crime, we can't even talk to them. The law prohibits us from doing that. We have to get them an attorney and all of that. So a lot of times what will happen is, we'll take the report, the documentation report, and then we will file it with the district attorney's office, and juvenile's cases with probation, and see if there, if there's enough there for them to do something about it. Unfortunately, from our perspective, California laws have changed in the last few years as well. Shoplifting, minor thefts, a lot of other things that were serious in the past are now very low-grade misdemeanors. When we arrest somebody for a misdemeanor, if it's an adult, the jail won't even take them. So we have to, what we call cite them out, basically give them a ticket and a notice to appear in court at a future date. And that's a lot of the frustration that you see when, you know, we get somewhere, we talk to the kid, a lot of times all we can do is give them a ticket, or if it's an adult, give them a ticket, and then we have to let them go. Believe me, the frustration is felt on our part as well, because we see what this is doing to community members, businesspeople, and we try to get, do as much as we can within, obviously, within the law. When I first got here, we had an issue with, frankly, with businesses not willing to prosecute. So they'd call us, and all they'd want us to do is tell the person, get out of the store and don't come back. That led to a lot of repetitive behavior from these kids and adults. Now it's more consistent that a lot of the businesses will say, yes, I want to prosecute, but we still get a lot of back and forth, too. Yes, we want to prosecute, and then when we get there, no, that's okay, just let them go. I'm not saying you're doing that, but if we can get, maybe working with the chamber or somebody to kind of get everybody on board as to what needs to happen in a misdemeanor cases, it's, you know, it's you, let me make you the arrest, it's a citizen's arrest, we'll do the documentation and all that, but you're the one that's going to have to go to court and all that. A lot of times, people pocket that, so.
I've done that. I went to court.
Good.
And the guy didn't show up, and he never paid me. It was $900 something, and I see him walking the streets, and I tell the cops, and they don't care.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not trying to be down on you, but I have done all of that.
And this is probably not the right forum for this back and forth, but if you want to, feel free, please, to come in and talk with me during the day, or when, if you've got to be at your business, I can go in the evening to your business, and we can talk and see what we can work out.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else out there would like to speak to a matter not on the agenda? Make sure you state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Fierro. I live in Ukiah. My husband, Jose, and I have been doing business here in Willets Food for the last 10 years. We have Taqueria Halos and Taqueria Maria, and we're also here for a food truck, because for the last two years, people have been really requested, why don't you guys open a food truck after business hours? Like, our plan was to have it in front of the Taqueria Halos. Also, another reason, it's also because since the COVID, we've been impacted, and we have having layoff or cut hours off from our employees. We're like putting money from our pocket or savings to pay them, and now that we have enough people to keep working, I'd rather give them work instead of taking hours away from them. And I'm aware of the permissions right now, like she said, 20, 28 years, days a year, which is not really, you know, not even the effort. We have a food truck ready for, and I think it would be past the permissions, even if we could just try it, if the city would give us the permission to try it out for summer and see how it goes. And if there's no problems with it, I don't see why not give people the permission to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned to the other woman, if you could make sure you leave your name with Dolores, so that if the ad hoc committee meets again, they can reach out to you to let you know how that's going.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else interested in speaking regarding an item not on tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madge. Not sure if I'm violating the rules about that public comment idea, but first, I'd like to request that perhaps the city council have an agenda item about what to do about people who are, don't have homes, people that are in our community and out in the rain and cold. So to me, that's really hitting me in the heart, and I don't, I don't think the city has the job of providing that, but I'm wondering if we can maybe facilitate a discussion about how we could better address that, that's one thing.
I would support that, definitely putting that on for a discussion item for a future agenda.
And then at that same meeting, it came up that the police sometimes require or make people move, like if they're parked in Safeway and they're trying to sleep in their car in the all-night parking area, that sometimes the police tell them to move along, and other times they say, oh, you know, we'll just keep, make sure you're okay. I'm wondering if we, A, have a policy about that, and B, it was said at the meeting that the Supreme Court, maybe 10 years ago, had a ruling that if you do not have a homeless shelter in your community, you should allow people to sleep in their vehicle or at a place that's safe for them and not require them to keep moving, which they.
So that's definitely something that we would discuss in a discussion once it's agendized.
Okay.
I was just going to say, maybe we can have a meeting and kind of throw it out, but maybe the best thing to do is maybe have an ad hoc to kind of flush it out and maybe get some folks in the county and educate before we bring it to the whole council. Rather than, because we can sit there and, kind of like today, and we can hear a lot of sad stories, but I think that I'd rather have something that we know what we can or can't do, and then be able to kind of figure out where we could devote our resources if we had, that we can do on the city end, then I think it'd be more productive than to kind of just have an airing out session, so to speak.
So Brian, are we able to set up an ad hoc that's a non-agendized thing this evening, or do we have to put that on an agenda to set up an ad hoc committee? How does that work? Or Jim? You're muted. We, Brian, you're muted. We can't hear you. Volume is up, but we cannot hear either of you. Either of you have yourself muted?
Those are technology. What do we do?
Could I make a, can I make a suggestion? Because I have talked to.
Sorry.
Well, I was just reflecting back on a conversation with, that I had when I was mayor, a city manager, because people brought similar questions and comments. And I think that maybe the first step might be for each of us to talk with city manager. We generally meet with our city manager individually every week or every other week, varies from council members, but to have that, those early discussions, and then agree that after we've had an opportunity to reach out to him, and he puts together something that we come back and report, you know, say in 30 days, but with either an agendized item or a report from the county on how we can better serve the people of our community. But I just, I want to like go off in a direction when I'm not sure that, I mean, I just don't think that an ad hoc is the way to go.
I guess by the reason I just threw ad hoc is rather than have kind of a free-for-all, right? And I don't necessarily, I mean, even if we did a timeout and talked with Brian and Jim individually or whatever, then came back, and if they suggested that we do an ad hoc or something as opposed to just a free-for-all meeting, then I'd be game for that, too. So it's not, not that I want another ad hoc, I just, I would want them to weigh in and.
So let's say that we'll talk with Brian this coming week after he returns, get input from Jim Lance, from Attorney Lance, and figure out if the best option is to have an open discussion where we talk about the next way to address this issue, or if Brian thinks that we would be better served to put together an ad hoc and move it through not the full council. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I just want it to be productive, so we're not just wasting our time going in different directions.
Exactly, exactly. And I think your idea of having it go to ad hoc is that, you know, you could sort of make here. Flush it out. What are the actual possibilities for Willets? Who would look at them, all that? Okay, all right.
Just, time is of the essence, because winter months are still with us, and we know that's the most needy time.
Yes, unfortunately, this is government, and everything is.
I know.
Okay. Hopefully, that worked for the two of you. All right. Would anybody else from the public like to speak about an item not on this evening's agenda? I thank you all for coming and bringing your concerns to council. We really appreciate you being present. All right, we're going to move on to public matters. This evening, we have a proclamation in honor of National Black History Month that we would like to read.
Brian on the phone.
Okay.
Do you want to put him on speaker?
I'm going to put him up here next to the.
Is he speaking?
Okay, Brian, we can hear you if you want to talk.
You got to put him on speaker.
Oh, you can't put him next to the speaker, yes. What's with the mic?
Okay.
It's not going to work. It's not going to work.
It's not going to work.
Okay.
All right, I think we tried that, and we'll just have to limp along here. All right, so I'd like to read this proclamation. Acknowledging National Black History Month in February of 2023. Whereas each February, National Black History Month serves as both a celebration and powerful reminder that black history is American history, black culture is American culture, and black stories are essential to the ongoing story of America. And whereas shining a light on black history today is as important to understanding ourselves and growing stronger as a nation as it has ever been, that's why it's essential that we honor the legacies and achievements of all generations. And whereas across the generations, countless black Americans have demonstrated profound moral courage and resilience to help shape our nation for the better. Today, black Americans serve our communities and our nation at every level and field across the board, business and law, health and education, arts and science, and many, many more. And whereas our nation was founded on the idea that all of us are created equal and deserve to be treated with equal dignity throughout our lives, therefore, we are encouraged to openly and honestly work together as one to deliver fairness and respectfulness for all. And whereas, let us continue to fight for the opportunity and dignity to which every black American is due in equal measure, and let us carry forward the work to build an America that is bold, fierce, and free. Now, therefore, I, Greta Connie, mayor of the city of Willets, along with Vice Mayor Gerardo, Gerro, I'm sorry, I just lost that. Gerardo Gonzalez. And council members Larry Stransky, Suprema Rodriguez, and Madge Strong do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in Willets, and encourage all citizens to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Who wrote this?
It was one that I found, that I changed and made ours.
Very nice.
Did you sign it?
I will sign it now.
I like that very much. And it was, it was good to see the flags out on Martin's 13th Day this year.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Indeed. Yeah, last year with, I think it was COVID that slowed everything down, and they weren't sure they were able to get out.
There were two important days that were missed, and so I'm glad to see they wrote this.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. All right, we have no ordinances tonight to enact, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar tonight includes the city council minutes from the January 25th meeting and the special meeting minutes that was held on January 26th. Does anybody from the council have anything to say about the minutes? Any reason to poll anything?
I would like to move acceptance of the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and no members of the public here to discuss.
A second?
Oh, we had a second.
Oh, you didn't?
Yes. So may we have a roll call? Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mayor Connie. Yes. Quick question, procedural question. Prior to COVID, we would often approve the consent calendar on ICE, and then we did roll calls when we were being, meeting remotely. Do we still have to approve the consent calendar with a full council vote, or can we go back to the ICE?
I believe it's the roll call that we have to do.
We recommend it.
Okay. All right, just in case. Okay, thank you. Monthly activity reports, matters do not require attention by the city council but are on public interest. Those business license activity report is in the packet. No commission agency or authority items tonight. This is going to be tricky, city manager reports and recommendations, any verbal reports? Is this even possible to hear?
Is the volume on a PBO, is that?
Yeah, I have it at 48. I don't know what volume is.
No? Okay. Well, if you had something to say tonight, Brian, then we'll get it on next meeting.
It's having a great time.
I did have one update Brian would like me to, to speak to.
Okay.
Just as a reminder, the flushing will start next week, the week of 13, for the public. It should go till the end of April. We'll give daily updates on the areas that we will be flushing. And the other one was, we had what we thought was a leaky valve across the street from Safeway Complex. So we dug it up, it turned out to be a fitting, these custom fittings that PDB made back in the day. So we had an important mission on that. We fixed the leak, but the valve needs replaced. So we're going to retract them that, or regroup with that with, with construction and come up with, if we have to get custom parts made to replace that. In that, we had to shut, we would have to shut off the whole Safeway shopping complex. They'll be out of water, and so will the Archway properties as well. So we're going to look to try to do that night to lower the impact on the, on the businesses, because they literally have to shut down their departments.
Yes, okay. Quick question, what is the impact on the customers when you have the flushing? What do they notice, or what do they, what is it?
Yeah, so we sent out a letter to all the.
Customers.
Water customers.
Yeah.
And it explains kind of what you're, what you look for. There obviously will be some stirred up sediment. That's what we're trying to remove. Discolored water, low pressure. You may have no pressure or no water for a very short time as they exercise the valves. Basically, they valve them down. You might not have a chance. You're in the shower. It might stop for a second. We don't know that, what everyone's doing, but it'll come back. It'll come right back.
Not terribly inconvenient, then?
No.
But noticing that you might have more brown water while the flushing is going on?
Correct. And what we do ask in the-- you know, in the areas that we are flushing, wait till we leave until you do laundry or anything that could be staining. Check your water, make sure it's clear before you do any whites especially. But just be vigilant and-- and-- I would say we try to get through there as fast as we can. I have a feeling this year, the first couple sections, we've had probably five hydrants hit this last year. So it hasn't been really three in the last four months. So I'm thinking it may go a little quicker this year because it's naturally--
You did some pre-flushing by accident.
By pre-flushing. So--
So Scott, in addition to-- I know I got my notice and my water bill, but do we put it on our Facebook? And do we do all that?
Did it.
Okay.
And I'll update it each day and it'll take--
Okay.
Update the page so people will know where they're starting each day.
Great.
We will add that flushing letter to the social media as well. And leave the city safe.
Yeah. I'll have it branded.
Ask Brandy. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Since we're flushing more regularly, would we expect to see a decrease in the amount of brown water?
That's the hope.
That each year that we continually flush, that the amount of sediment will decrease?
Correct. Yeah. We, like I said before, last year was our first year. In the last two, we did a half flush. And we were concerned about reservoirs. So the last year pretty much made up for two years of-- two and a half years accumulation. So that took a little longer. So hopefully this year, we can get through it quicker.
I was just thinking about how some of us had pretty significant brown water in different areas of the community. And just because we did last year doesn't mean that we're going to see that level of brown water--
Yes.
--in the flushing again this year.
Correct. And for example, the hydrant was hit at Judy Redhouse. That-- it's like in the core of this north end of town, the lower end of town. And it stirred up a broad area. So we got-- we got calls from all over the place.
So hopefully flushing will be kind of a relief after that event?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, and if you've never seen some of the stuff that comes out, I thought it was chunks of rust. It was the manganese. And sometimes they're like really big chunks that come out.
You saw the steel pipe we posted. So that's an insight of, you know, if it gets jard loose, that's what we're trying to get out through the big entrances of the hydrants.
So flushing in combination with replacement of the oldest sections of name should be slowly and steadily moving afterwards.
That is our goal.
Yes, yes. Great. Thank you so much, Scott.
Yes.
Kathy, I just got a message from the city manager. He would like us to announce that FEMA will be here starting next Friday for the seven days. They're going to be here. People can come in, fill out their applications, get help if they qualify for it. Next week, there will also be a mobile truck down at the library. So people that want to start the program earlier, they can do that.
And we'll have that on our Facebook.
We will. Thank you.
And so initially, for folks who heard that the county had declared emergency, but it was only going to provide help for agencies, then there was an update and this now allows help for individuals--
Correct.
--who have been affected by the--
Correct.
Okay.
And I heard on the radio that this was coming, but they said the locations would be yet to be determined. So this is--
We just got notification today. They came in yesterday and did a walk-through with Dolores. They have to approve us, make sure we have everything that they needed for setup. And we have had to, unfortunately-- we may have to cancel a few rentals to accommodate. But we need to do this for the community, so we're going to go ahead and do that. So they'll be open the full seven days, I believe, to be here.
Yeah, they're coming in on the 17th and setting up-- they'll be open for the first on the 18th. And then they will be leaving the 25th, which is the following Saturday. They'll be cleaning up on that day. So the last day will be the Friday before.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Does Brian have any other secret messages to your wrist?
Nope. Oh, wait. He has one more.
Tap, tap. He's typing.
This is a new line of communication.
This is how we make do.
You know, Dick Tracy--
Because I actually have my phone in there thinking I won't need it.
Kathy, on that FEMA item, is there actual help for people who have monetary damage during the storm?
Yes.
Okay.
And what it is, actually, it's a loan. They'll be loaning the funds. You do go through an application process. It will not be approved on site, from what we've been told. It takes a bit for it to get approved.
But I assume it's a very low or new--
They're SBA loans, is what he's telling me.
Right.
And it's for both public and private assistance.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Anything else from the city manager? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to department recommendations. We have none tonight. Department monthly reports are presented at the second meeting of the month. So next month or in a couple of weeks, we'll hear from all the departments. So city council announcements, communications, and reports. Madge, have you got anything you'd like to announce?
Yes, I do. Well, first of all, February 2nd, I attended my first time as the official representative from the cities in Mendocino County to the Sonoma Clean Power Board.
Congratulations.
So thank you for appointing me to that. And I find their readings very interesting. And one of the things that came up-- two things of interest. One is that Sonoma Clean Power's rates are actually 5% below PG&E rates when you bundle everything. So you count all the different things that PG&E charges for you. Being a member of Sonoma Clean Power for your electricity is a benefit. It's a 5% savings on electricity. And yet, our city and most of Mendocino County only has about 70% signup of people that are enrolled in Sonoma Clean Power. So I would just encourage people to make a quick call or go on email to Sonoma Clean Power if you aren't one of their customers and take advantage of that. They're also very more-- much more conscious about environmental policies in the procurement of power than PG&E is. So I think it's doing good while also saving money. So that was one item I wanted to report. And the other thing is that they are working with, I think, three different groups on a geozone to take advantage of geothermal power. And our region is pretty lucky in that we have a very abundant source of geothermal power, which is pretty much carbon-free and, you know, doesn't use nuclear power. Or, I mean, it has relatively benign environmental effects. So it's a great source of environmentally conscious power. And Sonoma Clean Power was going to be asking all the cities and the counties to write a letter of support for pursuing that. But it was on a very short time period. I think we had to do it like last Friday in order to have it on time. And I did not get any follow-up on it. So if it's still relevant, I will bring it to city manager and we might want to write a letter of support for Sonoma Clean Power pursuing geothermal sources. Oh, and then-- okay, that was Sonoma Clean Power. Tomorrow is Economic Development and Financing Corporation. And that is continuing to loan money out to businesses and doing quite an effective job of that. I don't think they have a Willets loan on the agenda at this time, but they have been expanding their portfolio. So that's been nice. And then a week from tomorrow, with any luck, I'm hoping, we will have a Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. We have skipped two months at least and we've been sort of signied. So I'm hoping that the ad hoc committee that was working to-- to reestablish a full range of solid waste-- hazardous waste options that we're supposed to have is finishing that job. But I have not gotten a notice of that yet.
I'm looking forward to that. Several people have asked--
Yes.
When can they get rid of their hazardous materials? And what types of hazardous materials will they take as they're thinking about their spring cleaning? So I'm eager to be able to get back to people--
I am, too.
--and let them know what to do because otherwise I'm fearful that that will lead to dumping and spilling things where they shouldn't be.
And that-- and those are not supposed to go into your regular trash. It really messes up the trash system if you have, you know, batteries and specialized light bulbs and all that going into the trash. It just-- it's horrendous. So, yeah, I am as eager as all of you are to see that reestablished ASAP.
Does everybody not know that you can take your batteries and everything out to the feed cycle center and dispose of them there?
At SWAL? At Solid Waste--
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, good. Well, I didn't know that.
They're taking batteries?
Yeah. They've been having batteries forever and even flashlight batteries.
Yeah, you can't take paint and large light bulbs and things like that.
No, but you--
That's good. Thank you.
There's another one that does that.
And I think what's happening is the different haulers are just stockpiling them until--
Until there's a spot.
--until EMSWAL gets it together. That's better than being in the wrong place.
Suprema?
Yeah. I'm very concerned. I reached out to Chief Lizaraga today about a concern in regards to the-- what would you call it? I would refer to it as teen violence in our community. I'm really concerned about what's happening and thinking about our role on the city council and what we can do to improve that in our community. We haven't been able to fill the resource officer position. So just chatting with Chief and he-- feel free to chime in. He'd express some ideas on maybe marketing the position a little bit different and such. But very concerned that we're seeing an uptick. I mean, you've had people here this evening. They were even expressing the shoplifting, the vandalism that's been taking place in the community. And after I leave this meeting this evening, there are items that are not on the agenda or at the end of the school board meeting. So I'm hoping to make it to the end because I have some very specific comments for the school board on things that I would like to see them-- some measures I'd like to see them take to help keep our kids safe while they're at school. In the last two weeks, I know of five fights that have taken place on school property. And on Monday, during lunch, I broke up a fight over here at the city park. And this-- it's not just like an isolated incident. This-- there's a continuing-- continual problem of an increase in violence. And we hear on the news every day about, you know, mass shootings at schools and other communities. And you always wonder like, what were the warning signs? What did people do beforehand? And I don't think that we should be thinking that we're any different than any other community, that these types of things can escalate in our community. And I think that we need to do more and maybe in our city capacity, you know, trying to advocate for making sure that we haven't lost sight of getting that resource officer. Going back to our thoughts around having a police dog. You know, I work with a lot of teens and I hear about the drugs that are on-site at our-- at our schools and wondering what can we-- what can we do in this capacity here in this room today? And then beyond that, what can we do as people in this community to model, to be in a leadership role where we can create a wave of change? And I know that change starts with a lot of little things. So what little things can we do that will inspire or amount to something that's more-- that's truly meaningful and create a cultural change in our community? Because I think since COVID started, we've seen a pretty rapid progression of things getting worse in terms of teen violence in our community. And I just-- I want to see it dressed in a more serious manner before things become more serious than they already are. So that's my feeling. Maybe Chief wants to add something to that?
No, based on our conversation that we had earlier today, right afterward, I talked to some of the officers that were doing reports at the station. And we talked about increasing our presence in the schools. One of the guys already parks across the street in the old Taco House parking lot there. Because we have gotten reports and have gotten calls of the kids using the dirt lot across from there to gather and to, you know, take care of their business if they wanted to fight with each other. And so we've gotten already some positive comments from the kids that have noticed us there. And we do plan to increase the presence, not only for the sporting events. We had a good visible presence at the football games. But I told them, let's, you know, let's find out what's going on as far as, you know, what's going on right now. Basketball, volleyball, wrestling matches, whatever it is. And let's make sure that we have a presence there. And not only to be visible, but also to start building some bridges of communication with some of these kids. In the past, with law enforcement, kids will talk to us. You know, and will tell us a lot of what's going on. That's why filling that school resource officer is important because being on campus every day, interacting every day, builds that rapport, builds that liaison and that sense of trust from the kids towards the officer in order to tell them, hey, you know, at lunch today or after school today, this is what's going to be happening. So, yeah, we have a renewed sense of marketing that vacancy. And we're going to be pushing that out in the next few days and get HR to buy off on it and then, you know, post it over our social media and everywhere we can. So-- And we're still doing outreach ourselves with people we know in other agencies and neighboring counties and seeing if they're interested in coming over strictly as an SRO, which some people do. That's what they want to do. And that's the guy-- that's the person we're looking for.
I had mentioned to Chief as well that I would-- we haven't had the-- we haven't had the dogs at the school on-site. I have concerns about the amount of drugs that are on-site on our campus on a regular basis. And there is no-- there's no deterrent for the teens because there's--
I think a dog is also--
There's no accountability.
I know, but a dog also presents another issue with just-- it's not just you have it at the school. It also becomes another personnel issue that they--
Yes. Well, no, that's a good point. And in talking about this, one of the questions I asked Chief is, okay, if we don't have-- if we don't have a dog here at the city of Willets on our-- on our police force, we talk a lot about mutual aid with other agencies. Is it possible for us to use another agency's dog? You know, whether it be once a month, once a quarter, random something. There's got to be some kind of partnership we can work out with other agencies.
And we'll make that outreach. The closest one to us is obviously the sheriff's office. They have a couple of dogs. I don't know if any of them are deployed in the north sector. I know a while back, there wasn't any, but we'll find out and see if we can get them to at least, like you said, on a random basis. to at least, like you said, on a random basis, obviously, we want to make it just go through the school and let the kids see what the dog is capable of and hopefully stem some of the, you know, rampant drug use that's going on. Yeah.
That would be my hope. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Larry, do you have your report?
Yes, I have, I went to a Rails with Trails meeting last night, and I was not aware of this until 5:30 and their meeting was at 6:00. And we had two people that were discussing part of it, and so I looked at the two guys and I said, have you had anybody else that has been from the city council? And they says, no, we have called them, but nobody has come. You're the first one. And it was interesting, but it was from a different point of view, from the point of view of two lawyers that were trying to get some clients with the Rails and Trails that were going to, up to Eureka. And I just thought it was a real interesting meeting and I'm glad that I went to it. So I asked Greta today that if anybody mentions that and she can't go to it, then I'd be happy to go to it, anything with Rails or Trails.
Who sponsored this meeting? I mean, it seems like in the past, all the meetings...
Flint Cooper.
Is he an attorney?
So I would tell you, these gentlemen showed up at the bookstore yesterday and were very, shooting from the hip, fast-talking, hey, we're here and we're doing this thing and we're having a meeting, and I did not get a time, I did not get a location. I, he named several people who told him to come talk to me, none of whom I knew. And I didn't, I still don't know what it is exactly that they were doing or what their meeting was about. Is there more information that you can provide us?
The only, the only thing I can tell you is that it was an introduction meeting to have, what they're doing is they're looking at the people that are back up to the railroad and the potential about, that the federal government is going to enter into it and there's going to be some money that's available. And they didn't say, they didn't tell you the amount of money or anything else, but it just made me aware that it's out there, that everybody knows it, that it's out in the, not in this community, but in a lot of other communities.
So essentially, is it, the attorneys are wanting to represent the property owners in their easements?
That is correct.
Is that what it is? Jim? Brian? Yes?
Brian says opposing the trail property right, right advocates.
Yeah. Anyhow, it was just interesting because it was just a different view of the Rails, the Trails that I've had, and I didn't get to talk to McGuire, the representative from McGuire this morning, but I'll call them tomorrow.
So it wasn't a notice meeting that we, because I had not been approached by them?
I've never been approached.
Yeah, so when they characterize it as nobody from the city has come, I think that's...
I don't take that for a thing, you know. I just, I was through with dinner and it was at 6 o'clock and Virginia and I were done and we just got in the truck and came down here, and it was at the art museum, I mean, at the art building.
So they're looking for climate spend?
Yeah. So anyhow, and they've gone up to Eureka, so I don't know if they'll ever be back or what, but it was an interesting meeting and I was going to bring this for Dusty and he's not here today.
And I did leave a message for Dusty after they visited the book junkyard and I did not hear back.
And that was not the way that they were at the meeting to me.
Okay, okay. They were very interesting, the one guy was.
I don't have anything. I was going to go to LAFCO, but they canceled the meeting for this month and it's scheduled for next, the first Monday in March.
Did you want to talk about tobacco ad hoc?
Oh, sorry, yeah, we met with them and I believe that it'll be coming back to the whole council. I'm trying to think what else, that we had some questions, they asked us as far as the ordinance and we had some suggestions there. And so I think the idea is it's going to come back here so that we could, I think, I wish Brian were here to fill it in, but basically that it's going to come back for us to talk about at a council meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Brian, did he send you?
He said correct.
So after the elec, excuse me. After the election, did that change this at all?
Yes. So basically, there's an unfunded mandate from the state that requires municipalities to limit and cease the sale of flavored tobacco.
What the county basically told us is that there's no funding, that they're not going to do it, and we can either enter in an agreement with them to kind of do these, I guess, we'll call them surveys with the merchants to see if we're being compliant, but also it'd fall back on our code enforcement to be doing this. I guess the state may do some outreach and so will, kind of more like education kind of thing, but as far as the actual enforcement of the state section, it's going to fall back on the cities and the counties is what we heard from the, from the county representative.
So the election really didn't say that they were going to enforce it or anything else?
No, it basically just made it illegal. And what I got from some of the merchants are that they pulled what they thought, there's still, I think, from talking to some of them, there's still maybe some education that needs to happen. And there is some funding that apparently is a group that receives it, they can do some outreach to some of the merchants on some of this, but overall, it'll be up to each of the cities and the county to do the enforcement.
Brian has said Jim is working on a revised ordinance and that we need to have a separate agreement with the county for enforcement and outreach.
So essentially, what we're probably going to, what will come back to the council is a revised ordinance to update our ordinance to show that we are, you know, banning the sale of these items. And then we will have a separate agreement that the city will enter into with the county for the actual enforcement of that, so it doesn't fall on city code enforcement to deal with. So city code compliance may have the opportunity to reach out to retailers, but as far as the sting operations where they send in an undercover young person to see how successful they can be at buying these sorts of things or entering into the smoke shops if they're, you know, under 21, which they're not supposed to do, that would all fall under the county responsibility. And they are already doing that for the unincorporated areas, and so it would come down to creating an agreement with our city and them so that whatever cost is incurred is paid for by the new fees charged to the retailers who have their tobacco licenses.
So we would have to look at fees?
It would be a...
We already charged apparently some fees, but we would have to look at updating our fee structure. And it sounds like they have an agreement with Fort Bragg that needs to be updated, but they don't have an agreement with UCAIA yet, and that's part of this discussion that's happening now.
Right, right.
So, thank you.
Are we expected to have, do you anticipate that you're going to bring us a version that matches the states or a version that matches the counties or one of our own making?
Well, it'll be interesting to hear from Jim because the counties is a little bit more restrictive.
He's trying. Ah, I can't speak.
The counties is more restrictive than the state? No? Yes? Type, type, type. Okay, let's wait and hear.
It's my understanding the counties is more restrictive from the state, and so I guess what I'm asking is, is the ad hoc addressing the discrepancies between the two?
No, I think Jim is going to be looking at this.
Or Jim's going to be dealing with that. Okay.
And coming back with some recommendations.
Okay, good enough.
Does anyone have tapping on their wrist?
No, but he went like this.
So that's, so that's what will be coming back to us. And I believe, Brian, you said sometime at the last meeting in March? Is that what we were looking at or the last meeting in this month?
Yeah, because the next meeting's kind of full, so we were looking at March.
I believe.
He's timing. March, yes.
March, yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Okay, I attended the mayor's meeting and we nominated Madge as our city representative for Sonoma Clean Power and Jerry as a city representative for LAFCO. So Willets is representative for all of the cities in the county. There was an alternate selected for LAFCO, but for some reason on the agenda, they did not have an item to nominate an alternate for Sonoma Clean Power, so we're going to have to meet again, I think, next week. I don't know if it's been set yet, for five minutes to nominate the...
Who's the alternate for LAFCO?
I had it written down and I left a piece of paper at home. You will know him. If you name some names, I will be able to tell you, but I will text you if I mention it when I speak. The other meeting I attended was Monday, besides the tobacco ad hoc, was MCOC on Monday, and we elected new officers as well. Supervisor Jeredy is once again the chair of MCOC. Apparently, he has served on MCOC since 1999. He was an alternate from 93 to 99 when he was a councilman, and he's been chair since 2001. So no wonder, I always think, God, he knows everything. He's been doing it for a really long time. And the vice chair is Mayor Norville, Bernie Norville from Fort Bragg, who's a new, a new MCOC member. We have three new MCOC members, which was a little unsettling. It's odd for me to feel like I'm one of the experienced ones, but I haven't really been on MCOC very long, so this will be interesting. And otherwise, it was a very light agenda. There, I never know if you, the rest of you want to hear the details from transportation projects elsewhere in the county. I try to bring back to you just what really matters to Willets, but if you do want to hear about other items from around the county, please let me know, I'll be happy to give you information.
I'd be interested in items that you think are cool there that you'd like to see here.
Well, you know, one thing that I have been following is the Kovalo Trail. They, they're putting in a two-mile trail that will run parallel to their main street. They have a very high fatality rate up there of vehicles versus pedestrians. So they're putting in this stretch trail that will get pedestrians and cyclists away from that main road. And it's incredibly expensive and it was tied up for a long time with easement issues, which hopefully won't happen with our rail trail project. But the real concern right now is that the bids just came in and they're significantly overestimated, almost to the $2 million. So there's some scrambling with Caltrans to see if additional funds can be made available so that the project will not have to be reduced in scope. The real fear is that if they reduce it, then they really lose the safety measures, the efficacy that was planned into it. So it'll be curious to know how it goes. It is going before the CTC next week, so that will determine if new funding is available. But I've been kind of watching it because it seems to me we're a little bit what we're trying to do with our rail trail project. And it sounds like MTA is moving forward with site identification or at least specing out new sites for the transfer station, or is that what it's called transit station? Not transfer, mixing the categories. But, yeah, it's, I like being on MCOC, I think it's interesting, interesting stuff. And I find both Nafeli and Janet, who are the staff there, to be really on their game. It's impressive and inspiring.
Yesterday, Brick Trails had their presentation on the, on the study that was done for transportation in that community. There weren't, there weren't any new surprises, but there were some new people that attended and stuff.
The frustrating part about that is they, you know, they, every year, MCOC does this study to determine, to look at those unmet transportation needs, and year after year, Brick Trails is one of the communities that says, hey, we need help. And of course, this survey that they've been doing with the public forums is a real opportunity to look at creative, out-of-the-box ways to address those concerns. Unfortunately, where the funding is going to come from is still the big unanswered question. So a lot of good ideas being generated, but how do you pay for them and make them come to life?
Yeah, what I saw is that a dialerized service still turned out, I mean, for most of us, we already kind of knew that, but that seemed to be the leading answer to solve the problem is a dialerized service because it was most cost-effective and could reach the largest number of people. Yeah, yeah. All right, that's all I have, so...
I wanted me to add that, just for your guidance information, last night at the council meeting, Fort Bragg council member suffered a medical emergency during their meeting last night, so if we could send blowbushes and stuff there. He doesn't know who it was, so I will reach out and try to find out maybe to card him in.
Wow, thank you.
Everybody's okay. Brian has his hand up again.
Point Arena, he's changed to Point Arena.
Point, right?
Yeah.
We're all running there ahead, which council members?
Yeah, I know, I like...
Yeah.
Well, they were filling, they were down one and they had to fill because they didn't have enough people for their election and then...
Well, one of the Point Arena council members was going to be the alternative to Sonoma Clean Power, I don't know if it was that person. And sort of on the issue of turnover in these other boards, Emswa, that's also been an issue, at least two out of the five who've been relatively long-term members of that board are out now. And one of them was the key, you know, had been there the longest, really knew the ins and outs and was part of negotiations with C and S, so that's part of why things have fallen behind.
Yeah, you know, I, I think that in the general public, and I think you'll see of this, we tend to rail against incumbents, you know, ah, we got to get these bums out. But the truth is, is that, you know, the longer we do these jobs, the more we learn and hopefully the more effective we can be. And it's not a plug, but I'm just saying that there's, there's truth to learned skills for elected, so it's something to consider when we're voting for people. Okay, at least it's a little above. Does anybody have any good and welfare they'd like to share tonight?
Jane already told you that we had a really successful meeting on February 15th over at the Firehouse. We would almost stand in room only because we hadn't expected so many people, it was really exciting, lots and lots of people want to get involved, so we're, we're considering that the first step towards a lot more community involvement on things like housing, health, local food, you know, a bunch of really exciting topics were raised and a lot of movers and shakers out there, including quite a few new people in our community who want to get more involved, so it was an exciting kickoff meeting kind of.
I just want to say, I was helping out with Silver Brad at the Jambalaya Feet that owners of Metal Effects kind of chaired, and they, they provided the food and did the cooking, and I got to tell you, some business owners, they do a lot just having their business here, but some actually go out and go over and above to do that. So, I mean, they raised some money for Silver Brad and they, they did the cooking and I think one or two of their employees also helped out.
Their wife does really good cooking and that.
And I will just point out, I don't know if we all remember this, but during the height of the pandemic in 2020, when so many businesses were considered unessential and were closed down, Metal Effects went out and bought $600 worth of gift certificates from local businesses and gave them in goodie bags to their employees to encourage cash influx to the businesses that were closed. So, you know, it's not a new thing. I mean, they consistently really stepped up and supported our community, so.
And it was a good lunch.
Yeah, I just handed out the stuff there, you know, so...
I was a recipient who ate it, it was good. We all have to do our part.
And I just wanted to say thank you to Brian, our city manager, who chauffeured Jerry and I this last Sunday to participate in the parade for Edie, the drive-by birthday. Brian was a very steady hand at the wheel and I felt like we were, you know, safely transported around town in the rain, so thanks, Brian.
Good job.
He even waxed, I guess cleaned and had, had the truck cleaned and waxed so we looked sparkly.
Because it rained on us.
I drove my own. Oh, well, I was the passenger, my husband drove, I guess.
All right, we do have closed session tonight. We are going to discuss the annual performance evaluation for the city manager, so if there's anything to report out after the closed session, I will do so. Otherwise, we are going to see you all next time around.
And thanks, Jim and Brian, for all that talk, talking tonight, I appreciate that.
Brian, we're going to make big decisions about it.